The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is in session. Please be seated.
Good morning, Miss Mullane.
Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioners, in this session, the Commission will hear evidence from a lived experience witness, Mr Paul Walker. I call Paul Walker. Can Mr Walker be affirmed, please?
Paul Walker, do you solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mr Walker, am I correct in saying that you made a statement to the Commission dated Friday, the 21st of October 2022?
Yes.
Commissioners, there are two versions of Mr Walker's statement: an unredacted version provided to the Commission and a redacted version with his personal information and confidential matters redacted. Operator, can you please display the redacted version of Mr Walker's statement, paw dot quadruple zero dot triple zero one, that document, thank you. Mr Walker, do you recognise this as the statement you have provided to the Royal Commission?
Yes.
Is that statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Commissioners, I tender the redacted version of Mr Walker's statement as a public exhibit and the unredacted version as a confidential exhibit.
Thank you. They'll be accepted on that basis and allocated the next lot of consecutive numbers. And thank you.
Finally, Commissioners, I note that Mr Walker is supported here today by his wife Samantha and that he has provided the Commission with some personal photos of his service with the Defence Force, which will be shown on the screens through his testimony. Mr Walker, you're a veteran who served with the Army for around seven years, is that right?
Yes.
You enlisted with the ADF when you were around 20 years old in June 1996?
That's correct.
And after your initial training at Kapuka, you spent your career in the Army serving in Signals, is that right?
Yes.
And you were medically discharged from the Army in 2003?
Yes.
Mr Walker, can you start by telling the Commission a little bit about your background and where you grew up?
I was born in Cloncurry, in North West Queensland. I grew up out there until I was about 10 years old. I'm a descendant of the...
Take your time, Mr Walker. You're fine.
I'm a descendant of the Waiwi people. On my mother's side, in the Gulf of Carpentaria. And my father migrated to Australia from Scotland in the 60s.
And you mentioned in your statement that you didn't have great schooling growing up?
My parents separated when I was 12 and I was out of home when I was about 15. And so I went to seven different high schools. I repeated year 11. Went to three high schools in year 12. So by the time I finished school, I was 18. It's all over new to AIM4 and my grades are really poor. Throughout that time, up to the time that I finished.
Were you still based in Queensland when you finished school?
Yes.
And do you remember what first attracted you towards the Army?
Yeah. Before computers and social media, there was the ads on TV about the Army, the edge. And I was really attracted to that. And I wanted something more.
And what was the final tipping point that made you go and enlist in 1996?
I was doing a lot of labouring jobs as a young fellow and I was finding it hard to keep a job. And it was a lot of labouring type jobs. And it was hard to get a job because I had no experience. And even for labouring jobs, you needed some type of experience and one day, I come across the recruiting at the Cairns RSL. And so I went there.
Can you tell us a little bit more about that enlistment process?
I attended the Cairns RSL and I met with a recruitment soldier at that time. And we went through, I guess, an interview process with him and filled out a few forms and it was pretty easy, I found, to apply. I was in one place long enough to pass English and Maths, so that was in grade 11. And I took my year 11 report card along and that was what got me through. A couple of weeks later, I was invited to Townsville to enlist. And I was there with approximately a dozen other people, which at that time was majority were going to the infantry, it was said.
So not long after enlisting in Cairns and going through the process in Townsville, you then commenced training at Kapuka in southern New South Wales. And that's June 1996, so the middle of winter. That must have been a bit of a shock, going from Cairns to Kapuka.
Yeah, it was freezing. I'd never experienced anything like it before. And it was definitely a shock.
How long was that training process at Kapuka?
13 weeks. So you did your pre-week and then your 12 weeks. And I think for the first month, there was different stages that you went through for each month. So there's red tabs where you would be introduced to the basics of military life. And then blue tabs, you know, you're in some kind of routine. And then the yellow or the gold tabs. You can see a lot at the end of the tunnel.
Can you tell the Commission a little about your experience at Kapuka? You used the phrase tough love in your statement. What do you mean by that?
It was exactly that. It was tough love for the most part. But it I feel that if you if you can't handle that sense of urgency and the the stress that they put you under, then it served its purpose, absolutely. I really enjoyed my basic training because it also taught you about camaraderie.
Can you tell us a little bit more about how you were treated at Kapuka?
The instructors were always in your face for something and yelling and talking spit would come out of their mouths and, you know, that yeah, swear you a lot. And if you weren't doing the right thing, beds would get tossed down the stairs and things would just get turned upside down and at the end of the day, you're only as fast as the slowest person. And I again, I believe it has its purpose.
Yeah, so you think it was a positive experience for you at Kapuka?
Yes.
In your statement, you mention the number of people that you started Kapukas at the training process with. Can you tell the Commission about that?
We marched in with 56. And we graduated with 26. So a lot of people fell out for whether it was medical reasons or other reasons. But it right up until, you know, a couple of weeks before, it was just consistently people dropping off.
As I said, it was a positive experience for you. And I understand as at Kapuka, you got interested in serving in Signals rather than infantry. How did that happen?
Our instructors advised that there was some testing being done if you were interested in communications. And if you wanted to, you could go through some testing with them at Kapuka.
And how did you do in the testing?
It was a Morse code test for most part. And apparently I had a really good aptitude for Morse code. And I'd done really well.
Did they accept you into Signals straight away?
No. I was advised that they were concerned about my lack of education and and my ability to stick to the IET, the Initial Employment Training, once I graduated from Kapuka. But the next day, I met with a senior officer and I told him all the reasons why I believe I could do it. And as a young fellow that didn't really know what he was getting himself into, he gave me that chance.
At the end of Kapuka, having gone through the training and having that positive experience and being accepted into Signals, how did you feel?
I just felt like I was getting my life together. It was amazing. I didn't realise the area of communications that I was going to. But it was extraordinary, really.
And I understand that was reflected because you were given an award at Kapuka as well?
Yes.
Can you tell the Commission what that award was?
It was the Fifth Battalion Most Improved Soldier Award.
And I note, Commissioners, one of the photos that Mr Walker has provided us shows him receiving that award. After Kapuka, where did you go for your initial employment training?
I went to the Joint Telecommunications School in Kabala, near Toowoomba in Queensland.
And that was around 1996 to 1997, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And after completion of training, you stayed in Kabala?
Yes.
So setting aside deployments and training, a large part of your service with the Army, you lived on base at Kabala, is that right?
Lived on base at Kabala for nearly five years.
Thank you. Now, Mr Walker, I won't ask you to go into details about your deployments as they're addressed in your statement, but I understand you were deployed twice during your service?
Yes.
And your first deployment was around 1998?
Yes.
How old would you have been at that time?
22.
Now, were you able to have much contact home during that first deployment?
Not really. Maybe once a week. We could get on a sat phone and call home.
Did you find that added to the challenges of deployment?
Yeah, definitely. It wasn't something that was encouraged. Didn't really seem always available to for anyone at that time.
And you say in your statement, you didn't have a bad time on that deployment, but it could bear an aggressive culture at times, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you were posted on a second deployment in 2000, is that right? And you were deployed as part of a Signals unit? So in that role, your primary responsibility, your primary responsibility is not relating to engagement in active combat?
No.
But in the course of a resupply trip, you and your colleague got caught up in a hostile incident. Now, I won't ask you to recount the details of that incident at this time, but I just want to talk about Now, I won't ask you to recount the details of that incident at this time, but I just want to talk about the aftermath. So the same afternoon of the hostile incident, you reported to a senior officer whom you'd not met before. Can you recall how he responded to the event that you'd experienced?
He responded negatively. Um, it was quite minimising. And this was immediately after the event. I wasn't, we weren't talking. But he seemed to be in a huff and, you know, making comments like, this isn't, this isn't anything, this is nothing, uh, I've seen worse.
How did that make you feel?
I felt really, really minimised and, uh, you know, it was a life-threatening incident. And, uh, there was, at least for that part, it was just completely shut down.
And I understand the incident did have an impact on your mental health even while you were still on deployment, is that right?
That's correct.
Can you tell us a little bit about how you felt at that time?
Uh, well, I was already there for three months. So I had another, I was there for another four months. Um. I continued on the deployment. And it was a bit nerve-wracking at times when I was on certain tasks. Uh. But also the relationships with my colleagues I felt were suffering. Um. Because of what happened with the wounded soldier. It just felt really tense between our, uh, between our teams. And it was, it was really difficult to manage through the working relationships when we were, were on, on, on task. And, and also maintaining those working relationships, I guess as friendships in the little downtime that we had.
So you kept working after the incident?
Yes.
And you were struggling the whole time on deployment after that?
Yes.
You, you mentioned in your statement you didn't feel supported after the incident, and you refer to a culture and defence where some people are, in your words, just pogs. What does that phrase, just pogs, mean?
Well, I never looked, really looked into it, um, too much, but, um, it's just people other than infantry. You know, if you're not on the front line, so to speak, you're, you're just a pogue.
And i- is it a minimising comment?
Absolutely. And it's always said. And it's really dismissive when we're all there to serve the country together and do what we need to do.
And you said you didn't feel supported after. Did anyone talk to you about the incident?
On deployment or after?
On deployment.
I spoke to a senior who was dismissing how I was feeling at the time. And again, just, you know, minimising the incident, um, that had occurred. And words to the effect of, don't, do you, don't you think you're just looking for a bit of attention? Could you be looking for a bit of attention uh, over this? But I was clearly struggling and I'd never experienced this type of stuff before internally. Um, it affected my sleep as well while I was there.
Even while you're on deployment, it was affecting your sleep?
Uh, yes.
And you returned from deployment in March two thousand and one, is that right?
Yes.
And you'd be around twenty-five years old then?
Yes.
Can you describe to the commission how your mental health was after your return from deployment?
Well, I didn't understand it at the time. Uh, but, uh, I was becoming, um, within myself, I was really struggling. Um. You know, replaying you know, what happened over and over. Thinking that may, maybe I could have done things different. And just tore myself apart.
And did you have, um, did that have an impact on your duties at the time?
Yes. I became really depressed and I wasn't sleeping well and, um, you know, my anxiety was, you know, it was really hard. Uh, I didn't really, didn't really understand what was going on. And it affected, um, my relationships, um, you know, at work and, and just in general.
Could you lean on your colleagues for support, or could you reach out for support for your mental health at that time?
Not really. It was, it was hard because we wore the brunt of, you know, jokes and you know, all kinds of things about the contact. Uh, it was shocking, really, um.
Jokes made by other members? Were the jokes made by other members?
Yes.
And?
And they still continue today.
And did that response add to your feelings of stress and distress at the time?
Absolutely. Because I didn't need anyone judging me for something that they'd never been through as it was. I was already struggling on my own.
What triggered you to eventually receive or reach out for mental health support?
I went to, I went to the R A P, the, the Medical Centre at the regiment a few times. I just felt like I was falling on deaf ears. Um, trying to explain how I was feeling and, um, by that time I was, uh, I was, uh, transferred to the, the Defence Signals Directorate, D S D. And it was during that time that I again went to the Medical Centre at Duntrun. And you know, in a, in a civil, civil way, I kind of blew up a little bit um, around being ignored about what was going, going on. Um, you know, with, with, with my mental health.
And you don't need to use, uh, names, but I understand you started seeing a psychiatrist at that point?
Yes.
Do you recall the diagnosis that the psychiatrist gave you?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, chronic post-
Take your time.
Chronic PTSD and major depressive disorder.
And did you start seeing that psychiatrist regularly?
Yes.
How often would you see her?
Two, maybe three times a week, at least a couple of times a week for a long time.
I understand you started seeing her in, uh, two thousand and two and continued seeing her for almost a year up until two thousand and three, does that sound right?
That's correct.
Were you able to keep working while you were seeing the psychiatrist?
No.
Why was that?
I was in no condition to work by that stage. Um.
Could you stay engaged with your colleagues or other members of the Defence Force?
Uh, no, because I was based uh, in a temporary, um, temporarily awaiting my, uh,
You were posted, posted to a different location than usual?
That's correct. So I didn't have contact with those that I knew. Um, although there were others with me, um, that I, that I knew, but it was just kind of a holding until we were cleared to go to D S D. Um. Because at that time, uh, the psychiatrist said that I was unfit for work. Um. I lost all contact with everyone.
This then led to a medical discharge process in April two thousand and three?
Yes.
Did you want to be medically discharged at that point in time?
I'd seen other people with, you know, at least physical injuries that were still given a lot of time in, um, in defence, limited duties or other things. I feel like because it was a mental health thing that uh, you know, there was nothing really there to support me apart from the psychiatrist. And it may have not, you know, today now, obviously it's, it, it, it was the right decision. But it happened pretty quickly.
Do you recall any formalities in the lead-up to discharge where you were acknowledged for your service or assisted with transition?
Uh, there was only really the psychiatrist, who was like the main point of contact for, for my transition into medical discharge. There was no formal process apart from attending a few transition seminars. Um. But it was very impersonal. So my psychiatrist was basically my only contact. But apart from doing that work, she was also representing me on in a lot of different areas. By the time I was discharged, on that day, it was presented with your certificate of service. And it was very informal, um, in a senior officer's office. And that was it. It was a handshake and I was out.
How has your mental health impacted on your life after discharge?
It's ruined my life, really. In a lot of ways and I'm still still here, so I can be grateful for that. If it wasn't for my wife and my children, probably wouldn't be here. I've thought about suicide a lot. Um. I'm not the confident young fellow I used to be.
And you mentioned in your statement, um, you've had occasions where you've been able to reconnect with other veterans who've been able to help you. What kind of things have they been able to do to assist you?
Um. I've had a couple of, uh, old army mates you know, experienced things in Afghanistan, Afghanistan and Iraq, and they've gone through this process to um, seek help and to seek, you know, even compensation. Um. In two thousand and three, I was discharged on a white card. Ninety dollars a fortnight for medications or whatever. And that was it. But I was permanently unfit for work. But I'm let go on a white card with nothing else. And I finally started to open up about things after, you know, like the last seventeen, eighteen years. And and a few close friends from Signals um, encouraged me and helped me to go through the process because they'd already been through that process.
Mr Walker, um, earlier in your statement, you mentioned you're one of the only Aboriginal people in your platoon at Kapuka and one of only a few at the Signals Regiment. Is there anything you wanted to tell the commission about that experience?
Uh. Yeah, um. I had a great, I had some great mates. Um, yeah, but there's, you know, right from Kapuka right through, there is a toxic culture not just with what happened after East, the East Timor incident. But as an Aboriginal person, uh, experienced a lot of racism. And And it was hard and it was disheartening because this is me. But it also showed me who my real friends were in the army. And for that, I can be grateful.
Mr Walker, you make some recommendations to the commission in your statement and I won't ask you to repeat them now. But can I ask if there's any other comments or comments about culture or anything that you wanted to make to the commission now?
In addition to those recommendations, I'd like to recommend further engagement in First Nations culture directly with where you are on the land that we are today. Making sure that you have the right contacts in each area that you travel to help servicemen and women to understand better the cultural aspects. I appreciate the advancements over the last decade, especially with the Indigenous development programmes, which never existed when I was a young fellow. Toxic behaviours and to better understand all cultures.
And Mr Walker, can I ask you what motivated you to give evidence to this commission?
I could not do this. I could not, not do this today. I feel like I had to do this today to hopefully help defence service persons, defence as a whole, including defence families. I'm doing this to hopefully help improve things for the future. Because since I've started to talk, my children think-
Don't take your time, Mr Walker. No one's in a rush. We're not going anywhere. Just have a drink of water and take your time, please.
I'm their bigger army hero and they want to join too. And if they do join, I hope they never experience the bad things that happen. Like I did. But I also want to finish with, there's a lot of good things that happen. And I'm really proud of my service.
Thank you, Mr Walker. I have nothing further, commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr Walker. I just wanted to ask if I can, the pre-week at Kapuka. Could I, could I, because I've not actually heard about that. Could you just tell me what happens during the pre-week at Kapuka?
Am I allowed to swear?
Depends on how bad it is, I guess.
Get your arse kicked. Needs to be done. Needs to be done. In a way.
So that's, it's kind of like a week of introduction to what's to come for the next twelve weeks, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Can I also ask you, you said that when you expressed your interest in Signals, they, they didn't select you straight away because of your educational history? And then they queried your ability to stick with the IET. Can I just ask about that? Was that, was that a reflection just of your educational history to date? Or was, do you think there was racism in that?
Possibly. And the only thing that I've held back on today is putting assumptions out there. But I do feel because I was young and I was the lowest of the rank, of the ranks. And who knows? Who knows? It had anything to do with my background?
Okay. I had read your statement and through your training in Signals, you know, you obviously achieved a lot and were trained up in, in various ways. I mean, there was a significant investment in, in your training and your, you know, career development during your time there. So they invest in training, but not in support when there's an incident, is what I took from your statement. Is that a fair kind of reflection?
Absolutely. It just blows my mind looking back. There's never any support to an acceptable degree. There's never any acknowledgement of what happened on that day. And no one ever, ever talked about it unless they were questioning decisions on that day that led to a fellow soldier being shot.
Again, judgment but no support.
Yes.
Did you have a sense at that stage, you know, from the deployments, the previous deployment you'd been on in that one, was, again, were you treated any differently to others? I mean, was it just that the support was kind of generally not available in the face of, of incidents? Or were you in some way treated differently?
Well, at times I was treated differently. I've experienced racism from an instructor very early in Kapuka who had other recruits laughing and, which is in my statement. And then through, from basic training, through my IET, initial employment training, through to the regiment, which also includes the Marines who came to Australia to our base to work with us, making really crude comments about First Nations people. So I experienced a lot. There's one occasion where I'd won the hundred metres at the regiment and the comments floating around. After I ran that race, was that is because I was good at running away from the cops and, or I pretended that there was a, you know, a carton or a goon bag at the end of the line. And because I was the only one or, you know, one of two or three that I may not have been aware of, you feel pretty isolated.
Well, thank you for coming to tell your story and speaking up. It's very clear how, how much impact it has had on you and for an extended period of time. And so I do appreciate the fact that you've been able to come and talk to us today and tell, tell your story. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Could I join in Commissioner Brown's thanks? It's very courageous of you to come here and overcome your fears and speak to us as clearly and as well as you have. You made a further recommendation. My note of it is that you'd like to see further engagement in First Nations culture directly where you're on the land we are on today. We've heard from people involved with Norfolk here and heard about, I think it's the 60th, 51st unit up in Far North Queensland where there's a pretty significant Indigenous involvement in reserve forces. Is that the sort of thing you're thinking about or is it something else?
And it's a 51st-
Yep.
Far North Queensland Regiment, yes. There's so much great stuff being done by defence across the country when it comes to Indigenous recognition and support and pathways into defence. And while there's so much great stuff happening, I feel like we could tighten it up a little bit more by engaging further. So we can really appreciate, I guess, what Indigenous soldiers, Indigenous servicemen and women go through or could possibly be experiencing. So much generalisation around cultural things at times. And again, it's this minimisation of culture that needs to stop. And I guess for me today, that comes from an Indigenous perspective as well. And I would like to see things tighten up even further.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr Walker. I just have one issue I wanted to raise quickly. It's in relation to your entitlements. Was it the case that you were aware of the entitlements such as the gold card and so on, but simply didn't have the, the energy to be able to pursue all of that for those years? Or were you simply not fully briefed and were made aware of all of those things that you were entitled to?
I was not aware or told in detail. Because why would I be classified as permanently unfit for work, permanently unfit for work? Lose my career and not compensated in any way? I didn't really understand a lot of the wording, a lot of the terminology. And it has been a minefield over the years. Since then, since 2003, I've tried to work and I've had over thirty jobs with lengthy employment breaks. I've suffered financially. I've suffered as, just as a person. The process that I had to endure to revisit all of this was the hardest thing I've ever had to do in my whole life. You know, I've got children and I've got a family. And if it wasn't for my wife, holding the fort, maybe I could have been another statistic.
Understood. I just, I guess basically then you were classified as permanently unfit for work, but maybe you did anything to make sure that as a person who was deemed permanently unfit for work, the entitlements that would have come with that simply weren't followed upon or acted on by anyone?
No, and it's, it's, looking back, it just seems unbelievable that we've come this far. Some people haven't made it this far and that's why we're here.
Thank you, Mr Walker. Just on behalf of the commission and my fellow commissioners, we can't thank you enough for coming forward today. We know it's difficult, but it was really important for us and the public to hear your story today. Thank you. We know how courageous it is for you to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms Molino, are there any other issues?
No, nothing further. If Mr Walker can be released from his summons.
Yes, you're released from your summons to appear today and thank you again. If there's no other administrative issues, we'll adjourn till half past.
All rise. The Royal Commission is adjourned to eleven thirty AM. The Royal Commission is adjourned to 11:30 AM. The Royal Commission is adjourned to 11:30 AM.
The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is resumed. Please be seated.
Good morning, Mr Singleton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Subject to any housekeeping that anybody wishes to raise, we have in the witness box Jennifer Veitch, who is currently the Executive Director of Strategic Development in the Department of Veteran Affairs, Mental Health and Wellbeing Services Division. At university, Ms Veitch majored in Psychology and Women's Studies. She is currently studying aspects of interventions for suicide risk as part of a PhD candidature. Ms Veitch has worked for the ACT Women's Health Service, worked as a private psychologist, worked with New South Wales Family and Community Services, and has worked at the Veterans and Veterans Families Counselling Service, both as Deputy Director for Northern Queensland and Director for New South Wales in the ACT. From 2018 to 2021, she worked as the Assistant National Manager at Open Arms, and she then progressed to her current position. Might my speech be sworn or affirmed?
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, that is it.
Could you tell the Commissioners your full name?
Jennifer Marie Veitch.
I might just get you to get the microphone a little closer to you. It doesn't project very well. Could I ask the operator to bring up the tender bundle for this session? Commissioners, you'll see... No, no, the one on the right-hand side, which is specific to this session. I tender those thirteen documents. Document number two and document number thirteen I tender on a confidential basis. It may be that our respective teams can produce a redacted version of document thirteen in due course. If that happens, we will arrange for that to be tendered in the usual way.
Okay, thank you, Mr Singleton. They'll be accepted on that basis and allocated the next lot of consecutive numbers.
Commissioners, you'll see from the list that we don't have a statement for my speech, but we will be significantly aided by the responses that the department has made to certain notices that the Royal Commission served seeking information. Ms Veitch, turning to you now, could you please provide, with particular reference to issues that may be relevant to DVAs and Open Arms' delivery of services to its clients, just a broad, generalised introduction on these three things: what clients and their families need when in crisis, what clinicians need to provide appropriate assistance in those times, and the main challenges that both clients and clinicians can encounter in those efforts?
Can I just clarify in respect to receipt of services?
Yes. What are the barriers to a client to get service? What are the clinicians' barriers to deliver it? Just to give us a bit of an introduction from your expertise of these issues.
In relation to clients and families who are in crisis, you asked the question about what they need. I guess there are a number of things that spring to mind. One is an assurance of support. One is timely access. The other is information, information that is curated at times to assist, because, as you can imagine, in a crisis, absorbing and doing something with that information can be incredibly challenging. So someone that walks beside an individual and their family is pretty critical at those times. In terms of clinicians, clinicians responding to crises, specifically that's your question, can I just clarify that? Yes. Clinicians need to be in a team environment. They need to be skilled, of course, and to be able to respond to whatever the emerging or the issue at hand is that might be causing the crisis. But more importantly, they need to also be part of a team that enables them to do that job of being present with an individual to respond to their needs. So that can be through a team, a clinical team. Usually, in Open Arms, involves oversight by a senior clinician who assists in the planning and execution of care. And it also involves support in the process during and after, so supervision, ongoing development opportunities, those sorts of things that are all part of grounding and anchoring a clinician to do their best job. Can I just ask you to clarify the third component?
It was a big question, and thank you very much for that answer so far. And the third part, what are the main challenges that the clients and the clinicians face in achieving, in effect, their mutual objective, in the particular context of what DVA and Open Arms are trying to do and their client base?
Look, some of the challenges that I would say are probably not unique, or I don't think are unique to Open Arms, but some of the challenges is accessing resources. So in the[698.12]
The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is resumed. Please be seated.
Good morning, Mr Singleton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Subject to any housekeeping that anybody wants us to raise, we have in the witness box Jennifer Veitch, who is currently the Executive Director of Strategic Development in the Department of Veteran Affairs, Mental Health and Wellbeing Services Division. At university, Ms Veitch majored in Psychology and Women's Studies. She is currently studying aspects of interventions for suicide risk as part of a PhD candidature. Ms Veitch has worked for the ACT Women's Health Service, worked as a private psychologist, worked with New South Wales Family and Community Services, and has worked at the Veterans and Veterans and Veterans Families Counselling Service, both as Deputy Director for Northern Queensland and Director for New South Wales and the ACT. From 2018 to 2021, she worked as the Assistant National Manager at Open Arms, and she then progressed to her current position. Might Ms Veitch be sworn or affirmed?
Jennifer Veitch, do you solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Good morning. Could you tell the Commissioners your full name?
Jennifer Marie Veitch.
I might just get you get the microphone a little closer to you. It doesn't project very well. Could I ask the operator to bring up the tender bundle for this session? Commissioners, you'll see the one on the right-hand side, which is specific to this session. I tender those 13 documents. The document number two and document number 13, I tender on a confidential basis. It may be that our respective teams can produce a redacted version of document 13 in due course. If that happens, we will arrange for that to be tendered in the usual way.
Okay, thank you, Mr Singleton. They'll be accepted on that basis and allocated the next lot of consecutive numbers.
Commissioners, you'll see from the list that we don't have a statement from Ms Veitch, but we will be significantly aided by the responses that the department has made to certain notices that the Royal Commission served seeking information. Ms Veitch, turning to you now. Could you please provide, with particular reference to issues that may be relevant to DVAs and Open Arms Delivery of Services to its clients, just a broad, generalised introduction on these three things? What clients and their families need when in crisis? What clinicians need to provide appropriate assistance in those times? And the main challenges that both clients and clinicians can encounter in those efforts?
Can I just clarify in respect to receipt of services?
Yes. What are the barriers to a client to get service? What are the clinicians' barriers to deliver it? Just to give us a bit of an introduction from your expertise of these issues?
In relation to clients and families who are in crisis, you ask the question about what they need. I guess there are a number of things that spring to mind. One is an assurance of support. One is timely access. The other is information. Information that is curated at times to assist, because, as you can imagine, in a crisis, absorbing and doing something with that information can be incredibly challenging. So someone that walks beside an individual and their family is pretty critical at those times. In terms of clinicians, clinicians responding to crises, specifically that's your question. Can I just clarify that?
Yes.
Clinicians need to be in a team environment. They need to be skilled, of course, and to be able to respond to whatever the emerging or the issue at hand is, what might be causing the crisis. But more importantly, they need to also be part of a team that enables them to do that job of being present with an individual to respond to their needs. So that can be through a team, a clinical team. Usually, in Open Arms, involves oversight by a senior clinician who assists in the planning and execution of care. And it also involves support in the process during and after. So supervision, ongoing development opportunities, those sorts of things that are all part of grounding and anchoring a clinician to do their best job. Can I just ask you to clarify the third component?
Yeah, it was a big question. And thank you very much for that answer so far. And the third part would, what are the main challenges that the clients and the clinicians face in achieving, in effect, their mutual objective? In the particular context of what DVA and Open Arms are trying to do and their client base?
Look, some of the challenges that I would say are probably not unique, or I don't think are unique to Open Arms, some of the challenges is accessing resources. So in the broader health sector. So a challenge might be gaining an admission for someone who's going into an acute mental health crisis. So that would be a challenge and something that in the local environment or in the regional environment, that teams work to ensure that there's communication and pathways to be able to, you know, make that happen. Some of the other challenges are probably contextual. So if an individual in crisis doesn't have access to stable housing, as an example, that can be a challenge. And certainly, we respond to that through our Crisis Assistance Programme, as an example. But that can be a challenge. So sometimes it's context-specific what some of those challenges might be.
Operator, I ask you to display the document OPA-009-0021-005. Ms Veitch, I anticipate, if I got the number right, that we'll soon see the first page of one of the department's responses to one of the Royal Commission's notices seeking information. I'm going to ask you a question about Open Arms service and in particular, service gaps. Let me acknowledge you're not working there right now. So we're asking to the best you can and by all means qualify your answers during the morning and into the afternoon, with any limitations on your current knowledge. But take it as read, we do know that you've moved to a new role. That's just the first page for a point of reference. We'll now go to page 0041. And you'll see here that the question that was asked is posed in bold. Question nine is the one of concern. And then the department's given a three paragraph answer. I just want to focus on the first part of the question, which is to sort a description of any service gaps in services provided by Open Arms. What gaps are you aware of, of significance in the services provided by Open Arms?
One of the challenges that we have faced in Open Arms has been providing timely access to care. And some of that has been within the context of having, you know, the adequate resources to be able to provide that. So that would be one example.
What would be the most or the couple of most significant resource limitations that the organisation has?
Open Arms provides services from within its centres, its regional centres. And we have a number of those around the country. And those centres are staffed with both administrative staff as well as clinical teams, clinical staff. But the broader service delivery occurs throughout what's known as our outreach programme. And our outreach programme is made up of clinicians that are in private practice, social workers and psychologists, who deliver the service from their private practice, from their own practices, on behalf of Open Arms. Ensuring that we, and so then the majority of services are delivered from that programme, from those providers. Ensuring that we have enough providers in as many locations as possible continues to be a challenge. And, you know, that's a challenge across the broader mental health sector, I would say. I don't think, again, we're unique in that challenge. But certainly, that certainly contributes to some of the pressure around meeting that gap.
Are there larger gaps or greater challenges with respect to some professions rather than others? In other words, is it harder to get some professions employed or retained than others?
Not to my knowledge specifically. We engage, in our outreach programme, we engage psychologists and social workers only. I don't have data on the gaps between those two professions.
In your broad experience, they're relatively equally easy to get. I know that's a very crude way to put it, but is that about right? Or is one harder to find than the other?
Those two disciplines.
Of those two disciplines?
Yeah. Not in my, nothing specific in my experience.
And what about region or geographical coverage? One might guess that Sydney, Melbourne and other major centres are a little easier to service. But are there actual gaps, parts of Australia, where you just can't get anyone, or at least not enough?
Two areas stand out. One is the ACT and the other is Northern Territory. The challenge to have sufficient providers in those locations has been longstanding. I think there has been some improvement in that recently, but it still continues to be a challenge.
Do you have any thoughts on how those two gaps might be addressed?
Well, we've certainly put in place a number of initiatives to try and address those gaps. An example of that would be telehealth. So we have always offered telehealth, but COVID changed the uptake and the acceptability of those services. And so we provide access to that in places such as the ACT and Northern Territory. We provide telehealth services to ensure timely access. So that would be one example.
Is there any system arrangement policy or anything of that kind which attempts to start with a face-to-face consultation, even for someone far away, maybe travelling or whatever? But then there's a programme of trying to identify those who might be better able to cope with telehealth. And it's then done that way, which might free up resources for those who can't really benefit so much. Is there any formal or system for that?
I would say that the delivery of telehealth has evolved over time. And again, our experience in Open Arms is very similar to the experience in the broader sector and just noting the recent changes to the requirement not to have to have a first appointment in the same location or in person, to be able to receive access to those services under the Department of Health funding arrangements. So ours is similar. I think certainly earlier in the course of delivering telehealth, we recommended that the first appointment would be face-to-face so that that assessment you're referring to could occur and that sort of negotiation with the client could occur. But those things can also become barriers. If we get too narrow or rigid in applying that sort of a policy, then we miss the opportunity to check what the client needs. And for some clients, a face-to-face appointment is actually not what they need. And that telehealth is actually a preferred, as the sole mode for service delivery is actually preferred. So our response is to assess that at the beginning, at that point of first engagement with a client, is to have that discussion about options and about preferences.
And is that kind of assessment done later? For maybe after the first meeting or the second meeting to perhaps adjust the mode?
Quite variable. So those discussions happen quite early in the assessment process once an individual contacts the service to request care or to request specifically counselling, is the example we're talking about here when we talk about telehealth. So that discussion and that assessment happens quite early and can often be driven by location. So somebody who's contacting from the ACT, as an example, where we know that it is harder to get a faster service just because of the resources available, then that is an absolute offering is telehealth. And again, though, that discussion and that negotiation about whether that will occur happens with each of the individual clients. But it's also offered as part of the care. Once someone's established in care, if they choose to move to a telehealth arrangement, then that's definitely something that we offer.
Thank you. I'll ask the operator to bring up the document OPA-009-0021-005 at page 0020. While that's being done, Ms Veitch, are you currently leading a project called the Service Review and Transformation Programme?
Yes, I am.
Could you just give the Commissioners a brief introduction to the programme? And in particular, the scope of the work that's being done and the outcomes that you hope to achieve?
Yeah. The Service Review and Transformation Programme is a programme of work that has a number of elements to it. The aim of the programme is to help us to determine a future model of mental health and wellbeing service delivery. We're doing that by looking at a number of different elements or considering a number of different factors. One is a piece of work that, what is known as a Horizon Scan methodology, to actually look at what some of those future trends and priorities need to be, so looking forward. And at the same time, we're doing a piece of work that's looking at the way that we're delivering services across the division currently. So it's a current state assessment. So those two pieces of work are happening at the moment to inform service design work or co-design work with our community, which we're planning to commence in the new year.
And is this a review that's being done at the departmental level? That is, is it reviewing what the department, including Open Arms, can do? Or is it specifically about Open Arms?
It's about the division. It's what services across the division that includes Open Arms.
When and why was this particular programme initiated?
It was initiated, the early initiation was late last year. It really commenced in April this year. We took some time to consider how we might approach that question of what a future model might be for the division, noting that there are different service delivery arms within the division. So essentially, it commenced in April this year and is continuing on into next year.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Was it in part any shattered because it was recognised there were gaps in service provision?
There was a context that was about the fact that the new, the Mental Health and Wellbeing Services Division had recently been established. And the establishment of the division was about bringing together two important areas of service delivery in mental health and wellbeing support that had worked within the department and worked to collaborate in providing care to individuals, but were essentially operating separately. So the idea of establishing the Mental Health and Wellbeing Services Division was about bringing those two service delivery arms together to ensure that we were as client-centred as we could be, to ensure that where there might be duplication, that we had opportunities to address that. But more importantly, that we had an ability to see what the client journey was across the division, across the services provided across the division. So that was a context for the Review and Transformation Programme, as well as, at the same time, looking forward, not only identifying the opportunities to ensure that those services were as connected up as they could be, also thinking and looking forward, what would any changes look like? What would a future model look like? So I guess there were sort of two elements.
When was the new division established?
2021, I believe, is the date. There were a couple of iterations to that. But I believe the formal announcement was in 2021.
And you probably said this and I missed it, but what were the two sections that were brought together?
Yeah. So the division is made up of a number of different branches and a directorate. But the main service delivery arms is Open Arms and the Coordinated Client Support Branch.
How far has the review that you're conducting, I'm talking now back at the Service Review and Transformation Programme, how far advanced is it? When do you expect to report and make recommendations?
The work is happening currently. We're expecting the outcomes of the Horizon Scan. That work was specifically commissioned to the University of Newcastle. So we're expecting a report from them in November. So that's one component. The current state assessment is happening currently. The goal is to have the outcomes of those two components this year to lead to some prioritisation of design opportunities, service improvement opportunities, where we will then take forwards some co-design work with our community in the early stages of 2023.
Thank you for that. The Open Arms National Advisory Committee, was that established in connection with the Transformation Programme? Or is it just an independent?
No.
Independent or distinct?
Distinct, yes.
Were the ADF involved in designing the review that you're conducting?
Not in the design of the programme of work as such. They've been involved in the process, in our consultation process to date.
And is that consultation in the course of implementing the programme, but not in the process of designing the programme before it began?
Correct.
Is it the same position with respect to veterans and their families?
That is true. Could I just add that? Part of the design of the programme of work, I guess I'm reflecting on my team who have lived experience as serving members, family members. And they certainly were involved in the early design of the programme of work.
Has some form of governance structure or other way of measuring the success of the programme been designed or put in place?
So the governance around the programme of work is via a steering committee that's made up of branch heads from across the division as well as other representatives of the other areas or key areas in the department. And it is inclusive of lived experience representatives.
And are those lived experience representatives, both serving or ex-serving ADF members and family members?
That is correct.
Do you have a sense of how any reform proposals you may come up with are going to be assessed? How someone will decide whether or not to accept your recommendations?
So there's a couple of components to that. One is that we are just establishing at the moment a lived experience advisory group to inform the ongoing, you know, sort of execution of the various pieces of work. So that's a key component. And then the other really is in relation to the steering committee's input. These are obviously, these are representatives of each of the service delivery arms or each of the aspects of the business. So they will have input. And what we will bring to them is a way of, you know, part of the work that we're doing is a way of prioritising the work, the service design work that we're anticipating we'll be doing in the new year. So part of the work is to develop a prioritisation framework. We're working on that at the moment. So that there is transparency in the way that we prioritise service improvement as well as opportunity through that transparent process for lived experience input as well as input from other users of the service, namely our staff, those who lead the services, so on.
I understand, or perhaps I misunderstand, that you're also working on a service design and mapping project for DVA services. If so, and by all means, correct me if I'm wrong, but if so, is that part of the transformation project or a separate project?
That is part of the programme of work.
Is it broadly on the same timetable, it'll be part of the results you produce?
The mapping work is happening at the moment across the division. We have a senior service designer who is leading that piece of work and working in with each of the business areas to map the services. So that work is happening currently and we're aiming to round that up this year.
What if any systemic problems has the Transformation Project or the mapping, sorry, programme, or the mapping project identified?
It really is too early to say. We are still very much in discovery and I wouldn't want to jump too far ahead. Yeah.
Is there scope in the project to, in effect, make interim recommendations if you identify a significant matter that has some urgency? Could you make some recommendations to get on with those?
Absolutely. We haven't identified anything to date, but certainly if there was something more urgent than, because of that engagement with the managers of each of those business areas, there are opportunities and ongoing conversations about things that might be more urgent to address.
Would the mapping project or the broader programme be addressing the relationship between the ADF, the DVA, Open Arms, perhaps other agencies, for the purpose of enabling members of the ADF and their families and veterans to receive a more integrated approach to health and suicide prevention?
To an extent. What you're describing really is a sort of ecosystem of care or support options and connections that an individual might have into the community. Mapping that extensively isn't part of what we're doing currently, but could be one of the recommendations that we go and do more of that work.
At a high level of generality, but at that high level or in principle, is it not important to integrate services with what the ADF is doing and different parts the DVA are doing?
Yeah, absolutely. So it will be captured to an extent. Just probably preempting that, that is quite extensive, particularly to map that, particularly in the broader health sector and the community sector, as well as, you know, what's relevant for our veteran community, which is, you know, a support network through our ESOs, which has a fair amount of, you know, options and complexity to it. So it is possible that that will be a next phase to do more detailed mapping of those service pathways and options.
Finally, on this topic, is there a particular document that describes the Transformation Programme, perhaps even a charter, but some other central resource?
Yes, we have a programme management plan that's a detail, that has all of the details about the programme of work.
Thank you very much. Was it issued by a particular officer, like the secretary? I'm not saying she may have necessarily typed it herself, but is she or some other official the person who decided this is the project, this is its scope?
So the first assistant secretary, Leanne Cameron, is the senior responsible officer for the programme of work, and she endorsed the programme. Having said that, certainly we have briefed the secretary on the work and she is supportive of the work that we're doing.
Thank you. I'll ask the operator. To confirm this, Ms Cameron, was, was she not the first, I'm sorry, the previous head of the division that you now lead, is that right?
She is the current head of the division, yes.
Do you understand she commenced in December 2019?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll just ask the operator to bring up OPA 990021, 0005, it's the same document, at page 0041. Question nine point, or question nine is on that page. I'm sorry, it's relevant, but it's not the one I meant. I'll ask the operator to go to a different document this time, which is OPA 990100. At, if possible, page 0021, I'm not sure whether this is going to work. Does seem to have worked. I may have bugged up some of my numbers, but we'll press ahead. There was a little prompt on something called Regional Advisory Forums, which had been conducted or commenced in April 2021. Paragraph 7.7, the operator brilliantly has brought that up. Are you familiar with these forums?
Yes.
Had any forums of this kind been conducted prior to April 2021?
Regional advisory forums have been happening for quite a number of years. They used to be called regional consultative forums, and the name changed at some point, but they're essentially the same thing.
What's their primary purpose from the departmental point of view?
Their primary purpose is to bring together stakeholders in the local environment, so they're regionally led, the regional director for each of our Open Arms centres or locations, convenes them about twice a year, sometimes more, or sometimes less, depending on a range of factors. But every year, they facilitate these forums, bringing stakeholders in to talk about the services that are being offered locally and to provide that opportunity to work together with the community to improve services. So if there are particular gaps or issues in service delivery, these forums are places where those things get discussed.
Are there particular classes of stakeholders or community members from whom feedback is sought?
It's a representative group of ADF, local ADF service providers, ESOs represented, community agencies represented, as well as having lived experience involved in the forum and participating in that process.
And how are these people chosen?
I would say it's, so just thinking about my experience when I was in Townsville as the director for the North Queensland region, the invitation list, if you want to call it that, was very much informed by the networks that we'd established and what we felt were the group that was best able to address the needs of our client group. So an example was ensuring that the regional, the ADF regional mental health teams were present in those forums because we were working quite closely with them at that time. Community agencies to ensure that we were connected with the sorts of services that were provided to families, to couples, so they were, you know, they were, we ensured that they were represented and engaged. So they're just a couple of examples of where the decision around who would be invited was very much based on what we understood were our clients' needs, where we needed to ensure we had adequate or good information about service options, and where we felt we needed to partner with those particular agencies to address gaps or to address issues where we could do that.
In short, someone in the department chooses whom to invite, is that right?
Yes.
Prior to issuing the invitation, is there some broader process by which even more groups and people who might be suitable participants are told of the forums and given some opportunity to explain why they should be invited?
Can you repeat the question just so that I've got it?
I might rephrase it.
Yes, yes.
It strikes me, and you can correct me if necessary, that the forum has a list of invitees from a larger population of people who might have been invited, who might have had something to contribute. Does that why the population get told, there's an advisory forum meeting or whatever coming up, let us know if you want to be invited?
It goes along similar lines to that. As the director, just going back to my example, as the director in North Queensland, my, and coming into that role, my job was to review that list and to engage with the individuals we're inviting. If there were gaps, to reach out to an agency as the director, as the representative for the department, to invite them to attend. That, it was, it was an opportunity for people to attend. People were incredibly willing to attend and be part of those forums, but it certainly wasn't, there was no obligation for them to be there.
No, I think I'm coming at it from the opposite side, not trying to overcome a reluctance.
Yes.
I'm suggesting that there might be people who want to come but don't get invited. Is that happening? Not, I'm not suggesting any mischief, but.
Yeah, I think I understand your point. We certainly didn't advertise broadly that these forums were happening, and so there may have been some gaps.
I think we could move to the next question, which is, what, just describe how they actually operate. Do people meet for a day or a week, or just send emails amongst one another?
Yeah, I think there's some local variation, but broadly speaking, the meetings go generally for a couple of hours. They usually involve the leadership team, usually the director of the region provides information about what's happening at a national level across the agency, and then provide some updates on things that are happening within the region, so local information. And then there's an opportunity for discussion about the information that's provided. Particular issues are aired or raised usually by the participants of the meeting, and then in the back half of the meeting, there's an opportunity for networking, sharing insights or ideas, sharing updates from some of the, from people who want to speak about their own agencies. So it's quite an interactive meeting process that usually goes for a good couple of hours.
And can you give us an indication of some of the main points of feedback that you get from the participants? I realise it's very a general question, but just sense of it.
It wouldn't be uncommon for issues related to access to be raised.
It's access to services?
Yeah, timely access to services.
Those, but take that issue. No doubt it has significance to families and children as well as veterans and serving members, but are there other topics of feedback specific to the families and the children? Does that tend to come up?
Again, I'll draw back to my experience in North Queensland. There was a particular issue and concern around the levels of domestic and family violence and the ways that we could support families better. And so one of the initiatives actually in, at that time, or in that location, was to invite the, a local police representative, as well as specialist services to attend those meetings. So that actually became a bit of a focus, just as an example, for a couple of meetings. So it sort of happened over a bit of a period of time, where there was discussion about, there was sharing of information about responses to those issues and what options were available, and some of the ways we could work together to tackle those issues with, while supporting families, and obviously with consent of clients to, that we could work together. But that, so that's just an example of a theme that emerged as a need, identified need, that then there was a sense that we were working together to try and provide solutions to that.
You mentioned two organisations that were invited and had particular relevance to families and children. One was the police. What was the other one you mentioned?
Specialist Family and Domestic Violence Services. I just don't recall the name of the service right now.
That's a sufficient indication. And earlier, you mentioned that people with lived experience are also participants. So are any of those family members as distinct from serving or ex-serving members of the forces?
Yes, there's always a balance of veterans and family members, so we're always on the lookout to ensure that both were represented. So I would say yes.
And going back to the police and the family services representatives, you mentioned specifically family violence or domestic violence as the issue. Are other representatives who aren't specific to domestic violence but are specific to other issues faced by families and spouses and children part of this process?
I think, as I mentioned before, that there were other local services that were engaged in those forums that had a role in supporting families. So Relationships Australia would be one example. They attended those meetings, as well as other family counselling support agencies were also represented.
All right, now, drawing back, not, I'm not referring only to the forums, but even more broadly, have you and your team and your department identified any gaps in the existing services for children impacted by parental ill health, suicidality or bereavement?
Not specific gaps as such. We certainly provide support to families and children and young people, and we work with other agencies in the community who provide support. And, you know, at that local level, there's, there's good knowledge about what those options are, so that when family is coming or a young person is presenting for care, that there's a determination about what the best avenues for support are, whether that's our service or whether that's actually another service, or whether accessing another service or array of services occurs and we provide some sort of oversight or coordination of that, that care for a family or for a child, a family with a child or a young person.
I believe there's a community and peer programme in existence and an interim report being prepared arising from that programme, is that correct? And correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm not sure of the report that you're referring to. There has been some review of that programme?
Well, let me turn to another question. Does Open Arms have a communication and engagement strategy to raise awareness and understanding of the services that it can provide, particularly with reference to families and young children, or, sorry, children and young people?
I understand a communication strategy has recently been developed. I don't believe I'm best placed to provide the detail around that.
And feel free not to answer this question, but if you know, does that documentation have a name or a description?
It's a communication strategy, it's the exact title, I'm not, I'm not sure.
It's fine. Just want to turn to to a few more questions about services for children. Are there particular things that children, including adolescents, need when serving or ex-serving members who are their parents experience poor mental health, including suicidality issues?
Broadly for children who are experiencing or are growing up in a family where there are mental health issues for a parent. You know, we know of the unique needs of those individuals. And I think for, for military families and children in a military family, that those issues are not that different, but there are some unique aspects to that that need to be considered when, when providing care.
I know that people are individual. Are there recognised differences in the needs of children at different age brackets? And/or does the department in some degree have plans that are referable to age brackets?
Well, there certainly are different needs because children, as they grow, have different developmental needs. One of the challenges for children where they have a parent with a mental health issue is, is the levels of responsibility that they feel for what's happening in their family, as an example. In terms of our response to those issues, I would say that that wouldn't be any different than any other service received in the community. That in fact, you know, our clinicians are working with children and young people to provide appropriate levels of care within guidelines that exist within the broader mental health community, the broader mental health sector. I'm thinking particularly about COPMI as they have a set of guidelines around. COPMI stands for Children of Parents With a Mental Illness, C-O-P-M-I. So it's, it's a, they provide guidelines, resources and standards. So as an example, our clinicians who are working with children and young people are aware of those and use those to inform and, and resource their work with young people.
In areas of work outside healthcare?
Yep.
The airline industry, policing, a variety. There are often policies and procedures and principles that an organisation will adopt to guide its workforce. They may, they're not necessarily right or wrong, but they are a chosen model of approach to delivering a service. Has Open Arms got, you've mentioned COPMI, it may not fit this description, but does Open Arms have some policy or model that it uses to guide its staff and clinicians and even contractors in supporting children?
Within our policy, within our Open Arms policy suite, there is guidance about support to children and young people. We seek to not replicate guidelines and standards that already exist. We reference those as well as codes of practice for each of the individual professions. So, and services to minors is no exception to that. And it's certainly referenced, those sorts of resources and working within best practice is referenced in our policy suite.
Are there any particular differences with respect to the provision of services to children under five? Both who is providing the services and regarding how those are delivered?
So working with particularly young children is a specialist area and our referral to clinicians includes ensuring that the clinician has that, has skills in that area of specialty and is, and can work within a particular scope of practice to provide care to children and young people. So where there are gaps that exist, we work with families to support them to access other services, specialist services within the community.
When supporting children and young people who are impacted by parental mental ill health, does Open Arms engage other service providers to deliver the therapy? Does it do it all in-house or a mix of both?
It really is a mix and it is very individually based. So all of our care provided is based on an assessment of need and ongoing assessment and ongoing dialogue with the individual receiving care and their family.
Now, I realise every agency would like a few more resources. Take that as read. But are there particular measures that you would like to see to improve the services for children and young people?
I do think it's an area where we can absolutely improve the support we provide, particularly in the area of early engagement. So I think the answer is yes.
And what, what needs to be delivered or done or created in this respect?
Can you repeat that? I didn't quite hear.
Just wondering what, you've acknowledged that you could do better. But have you got any ideas that have sufficient concreteness to say, yes, that's something we could build or institute or whatever it might be?
Some of it's about resources that we could produce or provide, that there are a lot of resources that are general in nature, designed for the general community or for particular groups. We've certainly recognised that there are some gaps in the information that is tailored to military families. And there have been some efforts to, over the years, to fill that gap. I think that we could certainly improve on refreshing those things and enhancing those, those resources as well as the ways that we make our services known to the community of families, military families. I think that there are places where we could improve that. We've certainly taken some initiative over the years, but there's plenty of room to, to improve.
Has any particular effort been made to produce literature or other information that is age appropriate so that teenagers and maybe children from 10 up can explore issues for themselves? Some of them know how to use the internet apparently and maybe there could be a website in language suitable for them. Has any effort been made in that regard?
So two things come to mind. One is particular resources that were developed by the department a few years ago that are still in circulation and still relevant, probably could, you know, like all things, could be updated to make sure that they're, they're absolutely current. And they, those, these particular resources, their booklets, that speak to the, speak to children and young people at particular age groups, so to meet their developmental needs. And my understanding is that they were co-designed with young people. So those are resources that are available online and in physical form. And I guess the other aspect here is that, I'm just thinking about the work that we do with the Defence Member and Family Support Services offered through Defence. They have a wealth of resources for military families and we work very closely with them and we share, share resources with them. So we're not looking to duplicate things that already exist and so we draw on those resources.
Is there any mechanism or measure to get feedback from children about their satisfaction with the service?
It's, it's a gap for us, I would say. Providing a platform for that to occur safely is, is something that I hope through the programme of work that I'm leading, we can resolve and find opportunities for that to, to occur.
I acknowledge you've said that there's a gap. Has there been feedback from children to date sufficient to allow me to ask this question? What feedback have you got from children so far?
I don't recall specific examples, yeah.
Thank you. I might ask the operator to bring up document 9999, four nines, 0021 0005 again and go to page 0040. I think we may have been here before in this feature. Question eight is a part of this page. Could you just briefly describe what the community engagement teams are and how they relate to a peer network?
Yeah, community engagement teams are made up of our mental health lived experience workers, known as peer support workers and clinicians, clinicians with experience working in the community. So they work together as a team to plan their activities, so to plan their community engagement activities and to provide support to individuals as part of, as part of that within a team environment.
You'll see that at eight point one, the department advises that further investment is currently underway. Are you able to tell us what the investment is that is already underway?
Yeah, the investment is the expansion of the peer workforce. So there's been, that has been, there's been iterations of expansion over time. And as an example, the National Peer Network started with approximately 30 peers and now we have approximately 60, just over 60 peers. So, and that has expanded over the last few years iteratively and that's what this is referencing.
Is it anticipated that the expansion is going to continue to improve or have, has a programme of expansion now been completed?
Don't think I'm well placed to answer that.
That's fine. You know, what are the key achievements of this expansion in the programme have been?
Yeah. Probably just thinking back to what you had on the screen earlier in relation to the regional forum. So there was a, a period where forums were focused on gaining feedback from our stakeholders on the Community and Peer Programme specifically. And some of the things that we learnt through that was that the community valued the programme. They valued the, the way that the peer programme was helping with community linkages. That the way that the peer programme was, was helping to bring together the community to work on solutions where there might have been identified gaps in, in services or supports in the community, as an example. And the way that the peer programme was, in our stakeholders' view, this is sort of the concrete feedback, was helping to address that issue in relation to stigma. So they're just some examples from that.
That feedback, was it obtained in effect anecdotally or has there been a formal evaluation of this programme?
There's been a series of reviews. We did a post-implementation review and that was conducted by an external consultancy. So I just don't recall the date of that off the top of my head.
I just want to draw your attention to paragraph eight point two. There's a reference to video counselling capabilities. So how are those being improved, if they are?
The improvement work was really about ensuring that we had good technology. So some of those really practical things. But more importantly, that we resourced our clinicians to be able to provide telehealth because that's, it's, it's, there are differences that clinicians need to take account of when they're providing online counselling and therapeutic support as well as ensuring that our community knew or do know that that's an option available to them.
You'll see that the support services mentioned here are available or will be available whenever and wherever. Are there any limits on, on access to this counselling?
Video counselling has filled some really key gaps for, for us in being able to provide support to people in locations where we don't have providers that people can access in person. So that, that's a definite improvement.
Certainly is an improvement.
Yep.
No doubt wherever isn't to be taken literally true because there may be areas with no internet connection. But are there other geographical limits to the phrase wherever? And perhaps I could throw in this extra thought for your consideration. There may be families who don't have the technological resources, like a laptop, to use the service. Is anything being done about that?
That was an issue that we became more aware of during COVID, the early stages of the pandemic and when we were growing our telehealth capability, that for some families, access to those resources were limited. The ways that we resolved that was to, was to talk with the family about what options, what options for support regarding wifi, wifi access, for instance, might be available around them because they, families didn't always know what those options were. And so, so our response was to problem solve that with them. We found sometimes that ESO agencies were quite willing to provide that sort of financial support to assist families with, with that sort of access.
Let me just now turn from wherever to whenever. Are there still delays before one can get access to counselling via video?
Well, there's certain things that have to happen to enable the, enable the online counselling to occur. So we need to make sure that individuals have the appropriate technology. So they've, they've got a device, they've got wifi access, they've got, they're able to download the platform that we use to deliver it confidentially, safely. So there are those sorts of considerations. And so part of the work, you know, part, part of our sort of procedures, if you want to call it that, to, to step clinicians through, you know, we have a checklist as an example, to step clinicians through to make sure that we're addressing all of those things is part of the setup for those arrangements with the families. And all of that, that happens as part of the assessment and engagement process.
What about the availability of counsellors? Are they instantly available once the technology is in place or is there a delay?
There may be times where there are delays. I can't think of specific examples. It's, it's a fairly responsive service, but I can't think of specific examples where there might have been a particular delay because we're, and part of that is because we're a national service. So we have access to clinicians who can provide telehealth around the clock, really. Out of hours, you know, you probably get into the midnight hours and it might be a bit more difficult. But also the question is whether it's appropriate in those sorts of times to be providing that sort of support. And the way we fill that gap is through our 24/7 support service. Our call centre provides support during those times. But in terms of that sort of telehealth, the video counselling, that is more or less immediately available where we can find someone to meet with someone who needs that sort of support.
I think that's the key, where you can find somebody who can meet the need. Are there sometimes difficulty in finding someone who can meet the need?
I think there's another context here that's important. If, if someone is contacting us and is wanting a video counselling session fairly immediately because they're in distress or in a crisis, then part of what we would be exploring and part of what we do explore is whether... is whether that mechanism, that sort of a session, a telehealth counselling session, is the most appropriate way forward to address the immediate issue. So that's, I think that's going through my mind as an important context in the situation you're describing. And then, and then if it is determined that a session in a short space of time with a counsellor is needed, then every effort will be made to make that available to the individual. Are there times where that cannot be facilitated? I imagine there have been times. If that occurs, then other supports are put in place, so telephone support will be facilitated. So clients are not left alone in that process.
In terms of assessing whether or not telehealth is an appropriate, or video counselling is an appropriate way to proceed for that individual, is that an assessment that's done on a yes/no basis? Or is it, is it a choice? Because it'd be one thing to say it's not appropriate because we have a face-to-face person ready to go. That's quite different from it's not appropriate so you get no service. So how is that, is that assessment done on a yes/no or is it comparative with other options?
It's based on the individual's needs and it's a, and preferences. So some individuals have an absolute preference for face-to-face and just will not accept a telehealth option. And then others will have a preference for a telehealth engagement and then there's a whole heap in between where people might be open to it and would like to consider it. And so there'll be a process of follow-up where someone's considering their service options.
Well, without caviling with the propriety of taking account of the client's wishes and rights to make decisions for her or himself, but from the point of view of the DVA, would it ever say, we don't think that counselling by video is right for you? And although we've got nothing better, we're not going to give it to you, even though you want it?
Two thoughts about that. One is that if it's not safe to deliver care via video counselling, then we won't provide that.
And is that judgment based on a yes/no assessment or is it comparative to doing nothing? Because it might be even less safe to do nothing. And maybe that's a wrong clinical statement, but so correct it if it's wrong clinically. But it does seem that perhaps there will be times where it's not a very safe way to proceed, but it's better than everything else.
Absolutely. There are times, we determining whether telehealth is provided to an individual is based on an assessment of their needs and preferences. If it's not safe to do that, if it's not safe to deliver support via telehealth for whatever reason, and that would be a rare occurrence, then that won't be offered. We don't, any of our care options would not be offered if it was unsafe for an individual. But not offering a service, as you're suggesting, could be equally unsafe. But at the same time, if we for some reason couldn't provide a service to an individual, there are other avenues for support and we would explore that with the individual. So it could be to support an individual who's in crisis, distressed, who's quite isolated, where, as you're suggesting, you know, it's not possible to provide telehealth or those sorts of really exceptional circumstances, then we would look to work out what are the ways we can wrap support around that individual, whether that's through family, through access to local resources. And we would work with the individual, as we always do, to gain their consent to support them with perhaps advocacy, that they access another service in their local environment. And that we would do that through our conversation with the individual as part of our ongoing engagement.
I think the thrust of your evidence a couple of minutes ago was there are no significant delays or delays are rare. Are statistics kept on, on delays and other difficulties and barriers to access?
Yeah. We do keep information, we track that nationally as well at this, at that sort of regional level, which is mostly at that sort of state or territory level, about the time it takes once someone presents to, when they are allocated to a clinician and then once they attend a clinical, an appointment with a clinician.
When Open Arms is dealing with an adult service person or ex-member of the ADF who may be suicidal, I'm assuming they're focused on that client or patient. But does the, Open Arms have a remit to go proactively to support the family? Or are they bound to go through their existing client?
Wherever possible, we are gaining client consent to share information about them. There are exceptions to that where an individual is at risk. If an individual is at immediate risk, if they're in danger, then there would be, and there are exceptions to gaining their consent to engage someone else to provide support, whether that's in the broader health sector. But in terms of family, it would be the same situation. So in an instance where we identify that an individual is in danger to themselves, at immediate risk, and we know that there's a family member in the environment and that we happen to identify the details of that family member, we ask for next of kin, as an example, when someone first presents to the service, then we would reach out to that individual to seek that family member, to seek their support and intervention in that situation.
I'll ask the operator to bring up two pieces of document, if possible. The document is OPA Quadruple Nine, double O two one, triple O five, at page double O four seven. And the piece is paragraph six, there's a question sixteen at the top and question sixteen C is what I'm interested in. And there's a reply at paragraph sixteen four. And I think the operator will put these pieces up just for your reference, Ms Feech and the rest of us. And the next piece is from a few pages on, double O five three, at paragraph, there's question twenty and reply twenty point one. What the, in different contexts, the point is made here that Open Arms doesn't record which clinicians are trained to work with children and adolescents. And we touched on this a little bit earlier. You mentioned that there's an attempt to match people with qualified people. How does Open Arms ensure that children are matched with clinicians with appropriate training if Open Arms doesn't have any record of who has the appropriate training?
There are two groups that provide the clinical care, so I'll just sort of go back to the regional centre-based clinicians and our outreach provider network. Just focusing on our centre-based clinicians for a minute. We have knowledge when we engage a clinician to be an Open Arms counsellor of their experience, their qualifications, their skills. So we have that knowledge at that local level and decisions are made about whether that clinician could work with children on the basis of that knowledge. And in our outreach provider network, we ask for individuals to identify areas of skill or specialty and that can include working with children and young people.
And having done that, does the department not record it as suggested by the documentation? Or is there perhaps a different form of recording then?
The information is kept in our, for providers, just with that example for a minute. That information is captured in an area of the client management system upon registration. Once, when the provider registers with Open Arms, we ask for that information. And that information is continuously updated. When, if there's any changes, we ask providers to keep us updated about their skills and qualifications. So that information is available. It's also kept locally. Our regional staff have really good knowledge about the providers that are available and their area of skill or specialty. And centre-based staff, a similar sort of approach occurs. I mean, staff come and go from those roles. But there's that local knowledge that's maintained about their abilities.
All right, two last topics while I eat into the commissioner's time. I understand you've had some involvement in the clinical incident review process. I'll ask the operator to bring up Quadruple, the same document, but page ten, paragraph two point six as a reference. That's a review clinically done when there are incidents, including deaths. What are the most common themes recurrent that tend to come up from these things? And recommendations that perhaps flow through a number of these incident reviews?
So a number of reviews were conducted in two thousand and nineteen. And I understand that these were provided as part of this response.
You'll understand we're not going into the detail of
Yes, yes, yes. And a piece of work occurred to look at the themes across a number of reviews. This, the report talks about, I think the quantum was thirty reviews, to look at the themes across those individual cases so that we could identify gaps or issues in the way that care had been provided and therefore to provide opportunity for us to identify areas where we needed to focus effort on improving the service and filling any of the gaps.
Turn to slightly, or a new topic. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand the DVA uses the principles of a restorative, just culture to support families when a client has died by suicide. Could you explain what that means in practical terms for those of us who are not familiar with it? And if applicable, tell us the differences between how that's done when a client has died by suicide and how it's done in other cases when a client has died?
Just a sort of context here that we're in the, we're still in the early stages of implementing a restorative, just culture approach to our clinical incident review process. So I just sort of preempt that that is, we're not there yet, we're still implementing. And that that's an ongoing process. I couldn't speak to where it's up to currently. Having moved into this other role, I'm not, I'm not working directly on it, but I can sort of, I guess, describe the intention of that, adopting that approach. It was happening at the same time as we were making changes to the way that we were assessing and responding to suicide risks. So our, our risk assessment framework was, there were changes that were happening in relation to that. And what occurred to us in that process was that when supporting staff to improve their skills in line with best practice, which in the area of suicide risk assessment is changing all of the time, to support staff, we needed to make sure that the environment that supported them when things went wrong was adequate to maintain high levels of care, quality care, high levels of engagement with our staff. The restorative, just culture approach provides a no-blame culture. It engages staff in the review process and it helps, helps them to feel connected to that as part of their own healing and acknowledges the impact that these events have on clinicians who have or are providing care when there's been a death. So just culture is very much about accountability and fairness and no blame. And the restorative piece is about doing a process in a way that is engaging, is supportive and provides the best opportunity for healing of all groups, so family members, staff, et cetera.
Let's go back to clinical incident reviews very briefly. What was your role in adverse event reviews? Is it the same thing or one is a subset of the other?
My role was to oversee that process.
And in two thousand and nineteen, was that the main year in which you had that role? Or did you have a longer period?
I had it during the time that I was the Assistant National Manager of Open Arms, which was between two thousand and eighteen and twenty twenty-one.
And how many, if you can recall, did you oversee?
I don't have a figure on the top of my
Did you do them yourself?
No.
Commissioner, I might just leave it, Commissioner, I'll leave it at that. I've eaten into your time a little bit, but that's the evidence in chief.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Ms Feech. Could I just clarify from my own information? You talk about regional centres. Can I clarify how many regional centres there are? And can you answer that in relation to DVA and Open Arms and whether they're the same or whether they're different?
So Open Arms is part of the Department of Veterans Affairs and it operates within all of the departmental systems. So our resourcing, our hu- human, human resourcing, our, we operate under the departmental policies, our procurement, all of those enabling functions or services are provided by the department. What's different for Open Arms is that we maintain separate records, separate client records. So we have a client management system that keeps our clinical information about individuals accessing care that is not accessible to all DVA staff. It is only accessible to those who work within the Open Arms environment. In terms of the regional centres, there's, I believe the current figure is thirty-seven around the country. And what we have is the major centres. And then we have smaller centres and what we have historically referred to as satellite offices within a, within a region. And those locations are usually based around where there's greatest demand. So in New South Wales, for instance, there are satellite centres in Liverpool and Parramatta. There's a major centre in Sydney and then there's smaller centres in Lees Moor and Newcastle, as an example.
So here in Darwin, there is a DVA office and an Open Arms office?
Yes, they're literally side by side. Yep, but they are separate offices.
Because I must confess, I did go looking the other day for the DVA office and couldn't find information about it, so that's, no. Can I just ask why, and you may or may not be able to answer this, but just wanting to understand the rationale for having Open Arms as it is? Part of the department, but with these separate records. Can you please just explain that?
To my knowledge, it's how the service was originally set up. So looking at some of the historical documents describing establishment of the service, it was requested and agreed that the service would operate, while the service would operate within the department, it would while the service would, would operate within the department, it would operate separately to, in order to protect the privacy of individuals seeking support. And so that there was no impact on any of their other business with the department.
Can I ask then in terms of, I think Mr Singleton did ask about in the mapping exercise, whether you were mapping the interface with ADF? And I, I do want to, can I just get clarity around that? You gave an answer and said you might in the future extend to mapping the broader health and the ESOs. But can I just be clear whether you're actually mapping the interface with ADF?
The simple answer is yes. And just to explain a little bit around that, that we, we, the mapping includes current service delivery that includes, for instance, our agreement for service with the ADF to provide care to current serving members. So that's part of our current service delivery and, and part of the mapping work that we're doing. So ADF is included in our mapping, our current mapping exercise.
So the extension of that then is ADF utilizes Bupa to access particularly, you know, specialist providers that aren't available in Garrison Health Services. So what's the interface between Open Arms and your outreach providers and Bupa?
Open Arms has engaged Bupa to provide care to individuals where we do have gaps.
Can I ask, is that at the same fee structure as you pay your outreach providers?
There's a separate schedule between what we provide, we pay our providers and with Bupa.
Can you explain to me why that would come about?
I probably don't have the detailed understanding to be able to unpack that. I think there are others that will be able to speak to that in more detail.
Okay, thank you. I'll see that. Can I just ask in the service design and mapping project that you're undertaking? And the groups that you are engaging as part of that steering committee? Are the Defence Families Association one of the stakeholders?
The steering committee is made up of internal staff. We are engaging with Defence Family Associations or Support Agencies. And an example of where we, we've done that recently was for the consultations that we ran for the Horizon Scan component, where we brought in representatives from different groups. And Defence Families was one of those. So there were opportunity for them to provide input to the work we were doing.
But in terms of the lived experience representatives that you have on your steering committee, they're not actually formally represented there?
My apologies, they are, there is representation from an individual who is, has lived experience as a family member?
But not necessarily as a representative of Defence Families Association?
Correct.
And just, I was interested when you answered Mr Singleton's question about the lived experience representatives. You said that you're, I, I, well, what I understood from what you said, and I may well have misunderstood. I took it that you didn't have external lived experience representatives, but you said you have team members who have lived experience. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So again, if I could just explore whether you see that there's any potential conflict between being an employee of DVA and being asked to give a lived experience perspective?
There are tensions between those things. It is a, we are inviting people in those positions to have a dual role that can be difficult. So yes, I would agree with your comment.
Okay, thank you. In terms of, again, Mr Singleton asked you about measures and you talked about, you do actually record data from the time someone presents to the time that they're allocated and then the time they actually attend their appointment. Do you have any figures that you might be able to give us that give us an indication of what those wait times might be?
There are detailed figures. I couldn't give them with a level of detail right now, but those, those are available.
Okay, because I, again, as you would know, we do a lot of private sessions. And something that I hear over and over again is someone who's contacted Open Arms in distress to be told that someone will ring them back in the next week. And that's not, I have to tell you, that's something we've heard frequently. And I'm just trying, sitting here trying to reconcile what I've heard with the description that you are giving us of how it's meant to operate.
I find that unimaginable. I don't think that we. I think there are always difficulties and things that go wrong when you're delivering services to, to the public essentially, to the community. So I don't, not suggesting for a minute that the service is perfect or has it all right. But to think that an individual in distress is turned away is, is, yeah, unimaginable and unfathomable, as I'm sure it is in your response. And I can't think of instances where that, where that has occurred. Or instances where we gain knowledge about that and, and look at what went wrong.
So in addition to your adverse events and incidents register, I'm assuming you've got a complaints management process?
So clients are able to provide feedback. And there's mechanisms for that that are advertised on the website. They are, as part of their care, they're asked to complete a satisfaction survey at the end of receiving care. And they're able to, that feedback can sometimes include complaints.
So you said, you talked about the, or Mr Singleton may have talked about the 2019 review of your incidents. I'm just wondering, can you give us an outline of what were some of the key learnings from that review? And then also whether that marries up with any of the learnings that you might have from reviewing your complaints management?
The learnings from the reviews have, have not been put against the complaints. That, that is a future piece of work. And in fact, reviewing the complaints is an activity that we're undertaking currently as part of our, the, the mapping work, as part of our current state assessment. So I don't have outcomes in relation to that. That's current work. Would you like me to touch on some of the themes from the, yes, from the reviews? So some of the, the themes were around questions of the adequacy of our responses to suicide risk. We're moving from a categorical approach to suicide risk assessment to a planning approach, a non-categorical approach or a formulation-based approach as an example. But that was prior to that change in our organisation, the incidents that informed this particular report. And so there were, that, that certainly stood out as one of the themes that, the adequacy of, of our, of our previous approach. There were other learnings around the way that we were delivering care coordination. And the way that we were, the adequacy of our response where there were comorbidities, as an example. The ways that we were communicating with community providers, as an example. That the adequacy of that was coming through as a theme for us to actually have a look at ensuring that we were adequately resourced from a policy and practice perspective. And we're, we're looking to improve that.
So have you made, in, in relation to that last factor, have you, have you made improvements in that space?
Look, it's an area that requires more work. There is a, a future piece of work that's planned to develop a model of care for Open Arms. And the, our approach to care coordination will be informed by that model of care. And that, so that will continue to shape the way that we're providing care coordination.
Okay, thank you. I could go on, but I'll give my fellow commissioners a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Ms Veach. What I'm going to ask is probably a bit out of left field. And if you are capable of answering it, please say so. But it's something that's been occupying our minds. We sometimes get told by veterans that there aren't enough doctors and other practitioners who are sufficiently familiar with the particular problems of ex-military or military people. When we were recently in the UK, we learnt of a system that's been developed there for, in effect, earmarking particular GP practices, about 1,500 out of 6,000 as having relevant experience in dealing with military or former military. And I appreciate that it's a completely, or a very different system of medical practice there compared to here. But do you think that there's the prospect for some such indication to be created here? And if so, should DVA have any involvement in it? I appreciate this is coming out of the blue.
Yeah. Just thinking about, I guess what I'm hearing and what you're saying is, is that there's, there's, is there some sort of register or some sort of, yeah, to identify?
Tight mark.
Yeah, yeah.
Recognition of a particular ability or skill.
Yeah. I, I'm not aware of a particular list or, or register of, of medical practitioners that identify with experience or skills in supporting veterans and families.
Individuals.
Yeah.
You have it.
Yes, yes.
I think we've heard from many people who are military or former military that it's hard to identify them.
And. Yes.
Often practitioners without that skill or background experience are not nearly as good at coping with their particular problems.
It's definitely something that makes a difference in whether a veteran and family member will engage if they know that they're going to receive a response that is culturally appropriate and reflects an understanding of the unique experience of military life. Whether there is a, a list or, or that sort of level of understanding across the broader department, I don't have knowledge of that.
Well, let's assume there is none. My question was whether you think DVA could contribute to the establishment of such a list? And if so, in what form?
I think that that would be beneficial because it provides a level of transparency. It provides information to those who might be help-seeking. And is, also sends a really strong message about the importance of having an understanding about the unique, the cultural components, the unique experience of military service. So I think there would be great advantage in that.
Thank you. Can you think of any way in which DVA might be in a position to contribute? In assisting in identifying the people with the relevant skills?
I think registers, you know, can be facilitated. I think there are challenges in establishing those, having people engage in those and maintaining them. But that doesn't, those things are not absolute barriers to, to establishing something like that.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. I'll just have a couple of quick points, Ms Veach. You've discussed a bit earlier the various regional advisory forums and other forums that you've invited people to and what have you. Are you aware if there's any, if anyone's turned their mind to making sure that those invitees include enlisted men and not necessarily focus on commission officers or senior NCOs? Because we've certainly heard evidence that a lot of the activities and the consultations that take place revolve around senior people and not the rank and file.
I think there's opportunity to ensure that, that, that we pay attention to that, that that occurs. I think there's opportunity for us to do that, yes.
So I'm sorry, you haven't actually answered my question. Is it, is it the case that that is something that has been sort of focused on? Or do you think it will be in the future, but not, not thus far?
Yeah, not specifically. Certainly not from a national perspective, whether that has happened at a local level, in a particular region, that's possible. But, but I would say probably no is the, is the answer.
Thank you. And just, again, just trying to understand the footprint, if you like, of Open Arms and DVA in the Northern Territory. Is it just the one office? And can you give an indication of the number of staff that may be involved for the Northern Territory, not just Darwin?
I'm sorry to do this, but that will have to be split into the two agencies because of the evidence.
Are you able to differentiate in the numbers between the two agencies? Is that what you're asking, Mr Fordham, that we do?
Yes, I don't want to say too much, but I understood the evidence was that there were two offices side by side, for instance. And I would have thought they might need to be split if it's going to help you.
Sure. With that in mind, are you able to comment on the numbers of both agencies individually?
I don't have the numbers of, the current numbers of staff in those offices.
But the only offices in the Northern Territory are the ones in Darwin?
Darwin, yes.
Okay. Can I ask if you could just take that on notice? It'd be, I don't think it's come up in your statement, but I'd be just keen to know the numbers that are involved in, in the Northern Territory. One last issue, you just, we've discussed the issue of feedback and complaints and so on. And I think Commissioner Brown sort of delved into the, what actions come afterwards. But it's still not really clear what analysis or what outcomes can be expected from feedback or complaints. And in particular, what reverse feedback is given to the complainants. I'm probably one of many people who are prolific feedback providers to the various platforms we all use on the internet. I don't recall anyone ever getting back to me and saying, we've got your complaint and this is what we're going to do about it.
So complaints are managed at a regional level. So a director is responsible for responding to a complainant and to addressing the issues. And then, and then at a national level, looking at what the themes are across the complaints from, across the national service. Is a piece of work that I would say we, we haven't done systematically and is something that we, we need to, to address. But in terms of the individual complainant, the response to that is the responsibility of the director and usually involves the, is usually a director responding or someone in the leadership team locally who's responding to that individual to address their concerns.
Okay, thank you. I think that's probably as far as we can take it. Ms Chalmers, is there any questions?
Chair, there's no questions arising from oral evidence. If for some reason something arises from Ms Veach's statement, we'll. If, um, for some reason something arises from Ms Beach's statement, we'll deal with, uh, solicitors assisting if we may.
Certainly, thank you, thank you. Mr Fraser, any questions?
No, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr Fordham.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Singleton, any matters arising?
One matter arising, and with leave, I'll go back to one of the topics that, that I raised. Seeing I've managed time so poorly that we have a spare few minutes. Um, does the department have a centralised complaint database?
Yes.
Is it interrogated or analysed to help spot gaps in services or resourcing issues?
The complaints management system, complaints and, or feedback management system. Um, there is, it's, it's one system for the department. Um, however, for Open Arms, there is a separate section within that system, so the records are kept separately for, for privacy and confidentiality reasons. Um, and just going back to what I'd said earlier about that, analyzing that information um, at the service level, at the Open Arms service level, i- is really something that we haven't um, done as well as what we could, and, and is a really a, a future piece of improvement work.
Is it something that would fall within the terms of reference for the review that you're currently undertaking?
We're currently looking at, um, the complaints across the division. We're currently looking at that data, um, as part of the, the transformation work.
Right, finally, I'll ask the operator to bring up a document, it's DVA five zero two three triple O two, double O seven six. Just, I'm not going to ask you to read the whole thing, but you just recognise what that is?
Hmm.
Um, the date, this is version. Is my, excuse me for a moment. I may have misspoken, the number I was looking for was DVA five O two three triple O two, zero zero seven six. It was the same colour. That's the one, um, do you recognise this one? Is this document the policy or procedure document under which the critical, sorry, the clinical incident reviews that we mentioned a little earlier, which you had overseen are conducted?
Yes.
This one is marked version one, and you can see the V one at the bottom, and it's in the t- t- table somewhere at, at the very end. The date of version one is the first of July twenty twenty. You oversaw them in a period when you worked from twenty nineteen through to twenty twenty one, I think you said. Was there some different SOP or similar document in the early part of your work, or did these incident reviews only begin in twenty twenty?
No, they, uh, did begin before then, and, uh, the policy, uh, that governed that was an earlier policy, um. Yep.
Right. Do you remember what that earlier document was called?
Uh, look, I, yeah, adverse event rev- review procedure, I, I, I believe is what the title was, I might stand corrected on that, but it was, it was essentially our adverse event review procedure, so I imagine the title was probably that.
Thank you very much. Thank the witness for her evidence, might she be, subject to anything arising from that, might she be excused?
Commissioner Brown has one more question.
Sorry, I do have one more question. Um, you spoke before about, um, working towards embracing a restorative just culture approach to your incident review. In terms of that, if an incident actually involves one of your outreach councillors, are they paid to be involved in that clinical incident review process as part of that restorative just culture approach?
We haven't had an instance where we have involved a provider in a panel to review the care because we're in, um, a process of implementing the approach. Um, so I, I guess I can't answer that definitively. Whether we, we will, um, in the future is, is, is a consideration as part of our ongoing development work, our ongoing policy and practice development work. Um, I can think of instances, probably just a useful comparison. Um, instances where we're inviting providers to participate in a case review where um, a care coordinator, um, is providing support because there are complex needs, um, of an individual. And we have a provider also providing therapeutic support, where we, uh, have paid for, or we do pay for their time to attend um, those case conferences, if you will. So I'm anticipating for the clinical incident review process, where we're inviting their participation as part of the panel reviewing the care, that, that, that will occur, has that, the structure for that been built yet? I would say no.
But sorry, just to take that a bit further, though, there is a i- if, if in fact you're embracing a restorative approach and a do no harm, and a service provider has been involved, how can you affect a restorative approach if you're not asking them to, to participate?
I'm not suggesting that we won't do that, it's the mechanism for that that hasn't been built yet. The, the mechanism for that payment, so it's, it's really the tin tax of how we, um, orchestrate that process, was probably where I was going.
And, and sorry, do you have a, a sense of the potential timeframe to actually bed down this this new approach, and I appreciate it, you, you're not overseeing it now, but just a sense of whether we might be able to come back and explore this issue prior to the completion of this Royal Commission?
I would expect so, I can't speak to the specific timeframes, but I would expect so.
Thank you.
Thank you, just out of fairness, Mr Fordham, is there any matters arising out of that?
No, thank you.
Mr Singleton, any other matters?
No, thank you.
Um, the witness is to be excused from her summons to appear, so. Um, thank you for your evidence, Ms Beach, and thank you for the preparation of the material that you've, um, you've gone through with us today, we appreciate it. If there's no other issues, we'll adjourn till nine AM tomorrow morning, I understand.
All rise. The Royal Commission is adjourned to nine AM on Thursday, the twenty seventh of October, two thousand and twenty-two.